All right, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Cholo Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, March 12th. The roll call this evening shows all commissioners present except Commissioner Clark, who is excused. I'll do the invocation this evening. Pledge will be done by Vice Chair Robertson. Will you all please start? Heavenly Father, we, as always, thank you for the opportunity to get together and discuss conditions and opportunities with that affect members of our community and both from a business and a pedestrian standpoint. We ask for your guidance as we work through these issues. We thank you for your generous donation of moisture to our community. We know that you realize how important it is to us over the longer term, and we thank you so much for that. We also ask that you keep in your arms the first responders in our community and the members of our armed services, both here and abroad, take care of them and make sure that they are brought home safely to their families and loved ones. We ask all of these things in your name. Amen.
Joining in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. No old business on the agenda for this evening, so we'll proceed directly to new business, which is consideration of conditional use permit applications submitted by Arrowhead Fire and Medical Authority, Inc., to allow for an ambulance service station on property located at 500 East Deuce of Clubs, that being Assessor's Parcel Number 210-19-004. Ms. Fectel-Cutter.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Arrowhead Fire and Medical Authority, Inc. has submitted a conditional use permit, or CUP, to allow an ambulance station located at 500 East Deuce of Clubs, that being APN The applicant has requested to add an ambulance station on a portion of the subject property. Currently, there's a solar business in the adjacent suite on the subject property. Most recently, the vacant suite was utilized by a church. The property is zone C2, which is general commercial. An ambulance station requires a CUP in the C2 zone. The applicant stated that this would be a secondary location with an office area, and they will utilize the location as an ambulance service station during the day. At this time, they did not plan to have crew quarters at this station. The applicant also stated they will only use sirens when necessary and only once the unit is on the Deuce of Clubs. The applicant requested additional time to complete and install landscaping until the threat of winter weather is over. The applicant stated that the property owner plans to pave the parking lot in August. The current zoning of the surrounding properties includes to the north, south, east, and west, all C2. The current land uses of the surrounding properties includes to the north, New Image Auto Body, to the south, Title Max, to the east, Video Dome, and to the west, Woody's Gas Station. Transmittal memos were sent to all affected agencies. Applicable comments received include: Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District say that the building has historically been used as a B occupancy and would remain as such, provided there are no crews sleeping there. The property was posted, and letters were sent to all property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. No public comment was received at the time the staff report was prepared. After reviewing the standards for review, zoning ordinance, discussions with the applicant, and because the request is consistent with the City of Cholo general plan, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve Conditional Use Permit 60204217 submitted by Arrowhead Fire and Medical Authority, Inc., to allow for an ambulance station on property located at 500 East Deuce of Clubs, that being APN 21019004, subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall comply with applicable federal, state, and local requirements, including building permit requirements. Two, landscaping will be required. The owner and applicant shall coordinate with Arizona Department of Transportation, which is ADOT, and city staff to update the existing landscaping on the subject property. The owner and applicant shall have until June 1st, 2019, to install and maintain the landscaping in substantial conformance with the submitted site plan. The parking lot shall be upgraded to substantial conformance with the submitted site plan as well, and the parking lot shall also be paved by June 1st, 2019. Number four, prior to crews being permitted to sleep at the location, the applicant shall coordinate with the building official to ensure compliance with building occupancy. Staff, as well as the applicant, are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Fectel-Cutter. Appreciate it. All right, we'll begin this evening with questions from Commission for Staff.
Where is the location of the ambulance to be kept? At the front, there's only 13 feet on the one side that they're taking. Where are they going to be parking the ambulance?
So, as...
They are going to be there.
I'm sorry, what was the second half of the question?
I mean, how many ambulances?
It's proposed to just have one ambulance parked there. As indicated on the conceptual plan that you have on the overhead and was included as part of the packet, they are proposing to place the ambulance service here on what would be the east side of the building. That would be where the ambulance would be parked. There is approximately, I believe, 20 feet or so between where that ambulance would be parked and where the property line is. It would basically say you can only do a one-way driveway through there without getting onto the neighboring property. We understand that that is another property on the east side, and it's really up to those two property owners to hopefully come to some sort of an agreement for reciprocal ingress and egress that would allow both property owners, both properties, to circle through and utilize these driveways. But at this point, they're proposing to use the ambulance parking here on that east side of the building, which would allow them direct access onto the Deuce of Clubs. You can also see three additional parking stalls on what would be the west side of the property. Those are configured in such a way that they would be able to back out, circle through the existing parking lot, and come out of that driveway on the east side, also in front of this.
Okay.
Any questions for staff?
I have a question that's probably...
For the applicant, okay. Any further questions for staff? All right, questions for the applicant, since we have one, would you please come forward, sir, and give us your name and address for the record?
Name is Casey Williams, and it's 1,000 East Mills, Cholo, Arizona.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Adams?
Just help me understand, if you would. No one will be sleeping there, but there'll be someone there during the day?
Yes, sir. So typically, we would run a 12-hour truck out of one ambulance out of there. The conversations I had with staff were if we were to ever require to man that station in 24 hours, as Katie had said, that we would get with building staff and make sure that Mr. Wilhelm did a life safety inspection of the facilities to make sure it conformed with overnight occupancy.
So then, this location, just to help you guys with your response...
With response times, yes.
And then they'll be there just in your peak busy times.
Yes, and like I said, if it moved into a situation to where we felt it was necessary or feasible to run 24-hour truck out of there, then we would get with Mr. Wilhelm in the building department for him to do a life safety inspection. Thank you. You're welcome.
Further questions for the applicant? Okay, anything for staff before we open it for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will open it for comment from anybody in the general public who would wish to address this particular issue. Ma'am, would you come forward and state your name and address for the record for everybody who doesn't know you already?
Hi, Beverly Laird, 894 Caballo Trail in Cholo. We own the Video Dome next door, and I really welcome our new neighbors. I'm not the parking lot police. I've tried not to do that, have not for years been the parking lot police, because it's such a difficult parking lot. I am concerned about where the ambulance is going to be parked and where they propose to park it. It doesn't quite work like it does on paper when you're standing there, and I'm concerned that parking the ambulance there, my parking lot, and the way my customers pull in and when they back out, have backed into more than one car that's been parked right there. And that's a huge concern, as well as the fact that people just park in the craziest ways there, and a lot of times, we don't look, because you just can't understand why people are parking like that, but it all revolves around that very small area right there. I'm concerned about it. I'm concerned for your ambulance. I'm concerned for my customers. I'm concerned for the parking lot flow of the whole thing. I might ask that the ambulance be on the other side of the building so that we don't disrupt that flow as it goes through there and around that backside. But otherwise, I'm really not the parking lot police. Welcome, you know? But it's a concern. It's a huge concern, as I picture an ambulance parked there 12 hours a day during our business hours. I don't picture that. It doesn't work.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
My name's Steve Laird, 894 Caballo Trail. My wife, Beverly, owner at the Dome. Just so that the number of times where not only cars, but trucks with trailers and horses and everybody that lives up here and uses our service, they will often come in and pull in parallel to where this flower bed is...
You can use the mouse there, sir.
The mouse right there will move right there in front. There you go.
Okay, so they will, they come in and through our entrance, and will literally, they just come and park parallel right here. Now, I would hate to see somebody be parked there in my store looking for a movie. They get their call, and what do we do? Now granted, I'm sure you can back up and forward and, you know, your three-point turn and get out of there and everything, but it's tight. It's a tight place to be, and again, just to reiterate what Beverly said, I have seen and had to report on at least two accidents where my customers back into the car that is parked where you're talking about parking. So I'm sure there's a good solution, and I, you know, I wish I would have known to maybe come and speak with somebody prior and give some suggestions or something, but wasn't aware to do that, so here I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the input, sir. All right, anybody else? Okay, then we'll close the public input and bring it back to the Commission. Do we have further questions, Vice Chair Robertson?
Well, I was just gonna see if, is there another way so that we can put the parking on the other side for the ambulance? I'm not sure who needs to address that, if it's staff or...
From a staff perspective, I mean, this is kind of a conceptual plan that you have here. It was drawn up. It's mostly to scale, but you can see it's not engineering quality. From our standpoint, we're certainly flexible. If the two property owners want to get together and try to work on something that would work for both of them, you know, and they want to propose something to us that we can take a look at, just make sure that there's no city code conflicts, we're certainly open to that. So what we did is, you know, we kind of looked at what the existing circulation patterns are, understanding that people will come in and essentially use both of these properties, parking areas and circulation areas, as if they were one property.
Right.
And they're really not. You know, there are two separate properties there. And so the intent was to show that this could be self-sufficient with parking, were there to be two property owners who were not agreeable on driveways and shared access and that sort of thing. I don't think that's the point. I don't think that's what Lairds have indicated this evening. So we certainly are agreeable that, you know, with the condition that they, you know, work with the adjacent property owner to determine the agreeable parking location, we're okay with that, in compliance with city code. I tack that on the end.
Do we need to add those comments into our recommendation motion, or...
I would add it as to staff recommendation number three, just that, you know, they shall coordinate. We also don't want to put, I guess, either property owner over a barrel where if one property owner says, "I'm going to do it this way," and the other property owner says, "You're absolutely not," we don't want one or the other to be able to derail this project. So certainly, they can work with each other, they can cooperate with each other, but at the end of the day, if they can show us something that meets city code, we would have to say that's okay. So I don't know, from the Laird standpoint, if that's something that they're willing to do. Casey, from your standpoint?
Okay, further questions for staff? I want to clarify one thing, if I may. According to Katie's presentation, the pavement was to take place by August, and the staff recommendation says by June, so, sir...
The property owner had told us that he could have the parking lot paved by June, and that he would, by August, I'm sorry, and that he would need up until August to have it, to have it fully paved in that front section, so...
Okay, so we need to address that one way or the other in this, in the motion, okay? So we need to address it by extending the time given under item three, or we can leave it with the proviso that you talk to the guy that owns the property, and he gets done by June 1st.
I just have one more. I have a question for the applicant. In regard to the paving, are you planning on doing some striping and maybe, you know, maybe would it help potentially to...
In the conversations I've had with Justin, this, what we're seeing right here, would be striped, and then we'll have to meet with Lairds and talk about what's on this east side right here, from where the proposed ambulance parking was, so... But this is, as drawn, this would be striped.
And is it possible for you to park it around the other side, or is that...
It's something, we will have to talk to the occupant on the other side of the building and discuss that with him, but I think it's just the three of us will have to come up with an understanding of how we can do this, and, because I certainly don't want anybody backing into my ambulance. That would be my worst-case scenario, that a 911 call comes out and I can't move because somebody bent my tire, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So back to the question regarding the timing of the paving. The reason you see the staff recommendation for June rather than August, we've been very fortunate so far this winter to have received a high amount of moisture. Would like to see that continue in the monsoon season. Obviously, we don't have a crystal ball that'll tell us one way or the other. Our concern would be that if you put it off too late, that we start to get into monsoon season, and then paving becomes very difficult with the moisture content in the soil. So there may be a little bit of time there, you know, as June 1st may be a little stringent. A monsoon season doesn't normally start till about July or so, so there may be a little bit of flexibility there, but that was the reason why staff didn't just go with the September 1st as requested.
Thank you for the clarification. Any input from you guys on how we might want to address that? Want to leave it as June 1st and, okay, let them...
Yeah, I think so.
Let you see if you can work with your, with your lessor. Okay, all right. Further questions? Okay, then I need a motion, please, from somebody?
I don't mind making the motion, but I need to be aided here with, referencing, you say, number three. How would I word that, Jason?
I'm kind of wording it right now, my...
Okay, very good.
What staff would recommend is that the applicant shall work with the adjacent property owner in determining most beneficial location for parking, or for ambulance parking.
Okay, let's see if I can do that. I move to approve CUP 602-04217 submitted by Arrowhead Fire and Medical Authority, Incorporated, to allow for an ambulance station on property located at 500 East Deuce of Clubs, that being APN 210-19-004, subject to staff recommendations, highlighting the fact that the applicant will work with the adjacent property owner to do what is most acceptable for each party and following city code.
Are we okay there?
On the parking.
On the parking. On the ambulance parking.
So if I can just read what I, what I think I heard you said?
Yeah, please do.
So you would, your motion would be to approve Conditional Use Permit 60204217, subject to staff recommendations, with the addition to number three, that the applicant shall work with the adjacent property owner in determining the most appropriate location for ambulance parking in accordance with city code.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
You certainly couldn't have. Nicely done, sir. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a disclaimer, sir?
Yes, we do. There is a seven-day appeal period on all conditional use permits. If no appeal is received by the city clerk within seven days, this conditional use permit will be effective.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, that brings us to the call to the public. If there's anybody out there who would like to speak on any other issue, which the Planning and Zoning Commission might want to, we, obviously, we won't act tonight or discuss tonight, but if it's something that anybody would want to put forth, then you're welcome to do that. If not, I'll dispense with reading the boilerplate and seeing nobody. Okay, then we'll close the call to the public and bring it back for approval of the minutes from the meeting of February 26th. Hope everybody's had a chance to look at those.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Okay. Give me a second. We got a second? All right, thank you for that. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are then duly approved, and that leads us to a summary of current events, and we'll begin with Mr. Hudson.
Today is my son's 14th birthday, so that seems to be a common theme at these meetings, so I wish him a happy birthday. Other than that, be safe out there. Looks like we're gonna get some more weather tonight, so...
Commissioner Adams?
Just want to, I know we're losing a couple of people, and I've enjoyed serving with you guys, and it's been an honor all the last four years, I guess, I've been on here. Three years, I don't know what it's been. Thank you for what you've done and your service, Jim.
Mr. Burns?
I agree.
All right. Commissioner Bishop?
I agree as well.
All right. Vice Chair Robertson?
We're gonna miss you, sir.
No. Maybe not, after you... I do have a prepared set of remarks, and I promise you, it won't take as long as it looks. But just for the edification for some of you folks here, when I first sat in one of these chairs, how do I say this? When I first sat in one of these chairs, the only other person in this room tonight who was here when I first sat in one of these chairs is this guy right here, whose now 15-year-old son was three. He was, what, a year or a year and a half into what has become an illustrious tenure, something like that? Okay? Ms. Fectel-Cutter was in the stages, what we call the interview process stages. Clearly, you made a very good decision, sir, and we all thank you for that, okay?
Amen.
And then to, I was hoping we would have both attorneys to pick on, because that's what they're for, but since we don't, let's just say that Mr. Brown was still in private practice doing probate or writing ridiculously difficult well-share agreements or something like that, I don't know. And he has, he has served us very well in his new role, and I wish Mr. Clark were here, because he was still in law school. So anyway, Ms. Haynes is the fourth admin that I have had the pleasure of working with during the tenure. Three of the folks who have sat in these chairs during the time that I have been here are now city council members, and the council is actually comprised of a majority of folks who have sat in these chairs, so we hold some power. You guys keep it going, you know? Couple things that, one other thing is that I'm really, really proud of is that I've missed two meetings in 12 years.
That's great.
And I hope that whoever you guys choose to slide down this way will continue that trend, okay? And I believe that that'll happen. Two things that you guys might not know about that I have found really interesting is part of what goes with this, I guess, this chair, is a membership on the Capital Improvements Committee meeting, and I've got a chance to see how hard that all of the departments of the city work to try and make, do the best they can with the resources that they have available for our citizens. And more than that, there's a committee that's called the ADA Committee, which is the Disabilities Act, you know, Americans with Disabilities Act, and it's amazing to me, I mean, I am really, really proud of the city for the proactive work that they're doing to try to make all city resources, all city activities available to folks that aren't as fortunate as us with ambulatory issues and things like that. So, you know, congrats again to the city. My biggest concern about stepping down is whether or not I, my, how do I say this? Whether or not my lifestyle was likely to be impacted with the loss of the revenue that the city is so generous with. That's an inside joke, you guys. We'll just leave it at that. And, but I'll tell you what, having said that, if I were 15 years younger, I'd do it again for free, but I caution our city manager and our city council not to think too hard about making that an item of concern going forward. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time doing this, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to be able to sit out there on occasions and look back up here and raise heck with you guys, so... That concludes my report, sir.
That concludes your report. Thank you, Chair. Just a couple things. First of all, I'd like to thank members of the Commission for coming out tonight. It's cold, windy, snowy, rainy, depending on the time. We had a birthday. Understand it's a sac... Understand it's a sacrifice for you. We appreciate that. Thank you. Secondly, I'd like to, again, just express my appreciation to our two commissioners that will be leaving the Commission. Chris Hudson, appreciate him stepping in. We had the untimely passing of a commissioner, a man that we all respect greatly, and Chris, you know, stepped up and filled in as needed for that, and has done so well, and we appreciate that, Chris. Thank you. Would like to also thank our chair. As he said, he's been here quite a while, 12 years. It's a long time. Would like to thank him for his service as well. Chair, before you close and go back, if I could have just a minute, I'd like to stand up and shake both your hands before we move on with the meeting, if that's all right.
It's perfectly all right with me, sir. I'd be honored.
Thank you.
You bet. Take care.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you, Chair.
Further comments?
That's it.
That's it? We're done? All right, we will consider this meeting adjourned.